County Cable, Montgomery.
Hi, I'm Susan Kennedy. Welcome to our Town Hall meeting. The county council is here at Westland Middle School in Bethesda and we have a full house of residents who have gathered to ask questions of the council members. But before we go to the floor to get those questions answered, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Valerie Irvin for some opening remarks.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, everyone. It's really great to be back. I've been here a couple of times to Westland. I'm the president of the council this year and I represent District 5, which is Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, Wheaton, and Kensington. So it's nice to be here with my colleague Roger Berliner, who represents this district on behalf of the council. And before we get started, there are several people in the audience that should be recognized first. And I will start with our police chief, Tom Manger. Thanks for being here, Tom. District 2 Police Commander, who is your police commander, Russ Hamel. We are being visited by some students from China. Sang Chang Hua is visiting from Beijing, China, and she's studying government. I would like to introduce to you Patty Jo Withum, who was just recently appointed to the county's redistricting commission. And someone who makes our life much easier at the county council is our council attorney, Mike Fadden, who lives in this neighborhood. Mike, where are you? Oh, he wa-- oh, there he is. He doesn't want to-- he doesn't want us to point him out, Mike Fadden. And someone who does terrific job on behalf of all the residents of Montgomery County, the Director of the Office of Consumer Protection, Eric Friedman. And someone that many of you probably know without introduction is Ken Hartman. He's the Director of the Bethesda Chevy Chase Regional Service Center. And so we're happy to be here with six of us, am I counting right? The majority of the council. And I wanted to let you know that Councilmember Elrich is home under the weather and he wanted to make sure that you knew that, that he tried to get here, but he is having a reaction to some medication. So we wish him speedy recovery. And I'm going to turn it over now to Councilmember Roger Berliner, who represents you extraordinarily well on the council, and he will introduce the rest of our colleagues.
Good evening to you all. It is a pleasure to be with you. What we do has come before all of our communities throughout the course of the year in every district and allow you to ask questions of all of us. I do this, of course, individually on a number of occasions, but the benefit tonight is that you get to ask your questions to the council president, to the chairman of our HHS committee, to the chairman of the Fed Committee, to the chairman of the Public Safety Committee, to the chair of the Education Committee, and to our newest member, Hans, on anything you feel like asking. But actually, what you will do is you'll pose questions and then our council president will determine which of us responds to it. But I think you all know that we're entering into a very difficult period of time. Our fiscal challenges are very great. We're about to get a budget proposal from the county executive in a matter of days, and that will occupy much of our spring until the end of May. But we look forward to having a full engagement with you. We are grateful that you are here. You are an active community and appreciate your being here. So let me introduce, or let my colleagues introduce themselves and let them tell you what they focus on.
Thanks, Roger. I'm Councilmember George Leventhal. I attended 7th and 8th grade here at Western Junior High School in the 1970s.
He's showing off.
I'm chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee and represent all of Montgomery County as one of your at-large council members.
I'm Nancy Florine, also an at-large member at Georgia's, just beginning my third term. I chair the Planning Housing and Economic Development Committee and am a member of the Transportation and Environment Committee.
Mr. Andrews.
Hi, I'm Phil Andrews, beginning my fourth term on the council. I represent the Rockville, Gaithersburg, North Potomac, Durkwood, Washington Grove area. I chair the council's Public Safety Committee and serve on the Education Committee.
Good evening, I'm Hans Reimer, one of the four at-large members. I live in Silver Spring, near Montgomery College. I serve on the Government Operations and Fiscal Policy Committee and the Transportation and Environment Committee.
I just introduced myself a second ago, but I chair the Education Committee and I serve with Hans on the Fiscal Policy Committee.
And I forgot to mention to you that I chair the Transportation Infrastructure, Energy, and Environment Committee and privileged to serve on the Public Safety Committee under Phil Andrews. And one other introduction tonight, Joan Kleiman of our superb Congressman Chris Van Holland's office. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe the floor is yours.
Yes, it is, and we have our first question ready to go.
Mr. Berliner, I'll direct this question to you. My name is John O'Neil. I'm an attorney in Rockville. I live directly across the street on Westbard. Our neighborhood is bounded by Westbard Muse, Westbard Avenue, and the Little Falls Parkway and Massachusetts Avenue. Recently, we heard that the planning board has given preliminary approval to a developer at the Betco block plant. Several high-end townhouses are being built there, which we're happy about. A lot of my friends and colleagues are very unhappy that preliminary approval has been given to build a bridge across Little Falls Parkway, invading Little Falls Park, and possibly putting a stoplight on that beautiful stretch of Parkway. Now, I gave to Mr. Cope a letter I wrote to the Park and Planning Commission, and I will ask you the question that I asked in that letter, and I know it can't be answered tonight. Is the board acting in the best interest of Montgomery County voters or the developer in giving that preliminary approval? I would ask you to interest yourself in this and report to us and tell us what's happening, because a lot of people are really angry about that.
I appreciate you raising it. I confess that tonight is the first time I've heard of this particular situation. As you observe, it is a matter that is before our Park and Planning Commission. I do believe that they are a very professional body. I will, of course, monitor the situation, but it is not something that would come before our county council. They obviously report to us. We have oversight of them. But we have a new chair of that commission that I believe is very sympathetic to the concerns of neighborhoods and communities. So I believe, and I always believe, that our community gets a fair shake on these matters and our process is an open, transparent one in which people will be heard. But I would be happy to defer to the chair of our Planning Housing and Economic Development Committee, who knows these issues very well, who used to serve herself on the planning board.
Back when I was very, very young. Let me just give you a little bit of background about how park and planning works in these kinds of matters. The council, by law, has, since the beginning of time or less, has delegated those decisions to the Park and Planning Commission. Now, we appoint the commissioners, but then we stay out of their work because the idea, the concept behind it all, is that land use decisions, at least certainly in these kinds of cases, are made by an independent, really civic, community-based group that evaluates the testimony, the professional advice, the requests, everything that comes before them. And we delegate to them decision-making authority. So we don't sit in, at least in those kinds of cases, we do not sit in judgment on whatever determination they may have made unless there is something that requires the council determination, and that is very rare in those kinds of matters. There are certainly other matters that people probably want to talk about today, having to do with zoning policy and the like, but not in those kinds of matters.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pickett Randolph. I live in Sumner on Sangamore Road, and I'm very concerned about the traffic at the intersection of Sangamore and Sentinel. I know a traffic light is impossible, it's too expensive, but we can do anything about the signage to put a yield to pedestrian signs. For those of us who are dog walkers, it is very hazardous for us crossing, particularly in rush hour. I've emailed your folks many times and I don't hear anything back. Thank you.
I regret that you haven't heard anything back with respect to it. My Chief of Staff is here and we will find out why that's the case. We often do have conversations with our Department of Transportation and, of course, our police as well, to ensure that in every situation where we possibly can, we make it safe for pedestrians. I'm very, very familiar with that particular intersection. I'm there quite often. So I'll follow up on it.
Good evening. My name is Ajay Bad and I'm a resident in Chevy Chase. Considering the economic realities of the country and our community, and that at $2 billion plus, the Purple Line is not a viable business model, nor is it an effective transportation plan. Mike Madden and the MTA have acknowledged that the Purple Line is not designed to take cars off the road. Will you please ask the state legislature and the governor to stop wasting tens of millions in engineering dollars, stop development plans that will make traffic in our communities worse, and scrap the plans for the Purple Line? And ask them to immediately implement a real transportation solution, one designed to remove cars from the road, and one that serves impending and immediate needs of NIH, Bethesda, and the 270 biotech corridor.
Amen.
The Purple Line will reflect economic reality. If there is not revenue to build it, it won't be built. But when the revenue is available, I believe the state will continue with it. It connects our two largest urban centers, Bethesda and Silver Spring in Montgomery County. The state very carefully considered an alternative that would serve Medical Center Metro rather than Bethesda Metro, and there was no question that the traffic and the cars being taken off the road from having the terminus of the Purple Line at the Bethesda Metro was much greater than having the terminus at Medical Center Metro. The Purple Line will assist the additional traffic at BRAC. The timeframe for building the Purple Line, of course, is very uncertain. Right now, the Transportation Trust Fund at the state level is broke and the economic reality is very much affecting the construction schedule. But the project remains a good one, and when we have the revenue to build it, it will take traffic off the road, it will improve mobility in the Bethesda and Chevy Chase area. I'm very much aware, of course, we all are, of the very strong concerns of residents of Chevy Chase and the love that all of us feel for the Capitol Crescent Trail. I do believe that as time passes, once we have the Purple Line up and running, the residents of Chevy Chase will be among those who will benefit the very most from having this transit improvement, although I'm very much aware, and all of my colleagues are aware, of the strong feeling and passion that exists in Chevy Chase around that issue.
Let me just add briefly that as Chair of the Transportation Committee, we're working very hard on creating more transit options, less expensive transit options. The county executive has just announced the formation of a Transit Task Force. I believe Mr. Winston, the chair of that task force, is here. My colleague Mark Elrich has been among those pushing very hard for what's called bus rapid transit, and I've been pushing very hard along the 355 corridor for what's called a sustainable transportation corridor. There's no question that we need more transit options, more inexpensive transit options, more flexible transportation options, and I believe our future will be a form of rapid transit. So know that we're working as hard as we can on that set of issues.
I'm John Low. I live in Springfield. I'm on the Board of the Springfield Civic Association. We are very concerned about what we hear about possible efforts that are going to seriously wreak havoc to single-family housing by allowing accessory housing, particularly by allowing it as a matter of right, rather than some discretion by a board with standards. And in talking with several members, well, I don't know when this is going to happen, oh, I don't know what's going to be made as a possible motion, and I don't know what. And my fear is that we're going to all of a sudden find it happens before we know it. Can you tell us tonight what the timetable is for any consideration of accessory housing, when that will be considered, when there might be public hearings, so the public can rise up and defeat that terrible idea?
Let me address that. The council has several housing initiatives before, right this minute, the things actually that have been deferred for several years because of our work plan. And what, one thing that the council committee, the Fed Committee, will be taking up on, actually on Monday and the following Monday, is Planning Board's recommended housing element changes to the general plan. And that has a recommendation in it, that accessory housing be permitted. We have had input on that from residents over the years since this has been proposed. The League of Women Voters has supported it, as has the county executive's Affordable Task Force. But we will, as a committee, be looking at that, looking at whether we want to insert that language in the general plan. That by no means, though, changes the law. And there is no proposal before us at this point to change the law and to make that happen. I would simply say, one thing that folks should be aware of, and I know there's a lot of feeling about this particular issue, is that one of the difficulties that we've been told about over the years is that there are currently many, many, many illegal accessory apartments within Montgomery County. Montgomery County enforcement people are without resources to find them all because in most cases, they are unnoticed. However, they are very concerned about the safety of those situations. And so one of the concerns is that the county be able to monitor the safety of housing within the county, and that is part of the concern that no doubt will be presented to us as we start this conversation. But there is no proposal at this point to put that into law.
Here's a follow-up question.
To follow up. The main concern, I think, I don't, we don't like the idea of any accessory housing in single-family housing, but to make it mandatory so that there's nobody has any discretion, there's no judgment, is crazy. And what I hear you saying is somewhat like saying, well, since going down River Road, people drive 80 miles an hour, therefore what we should do is change the speed limit to 80 miles an hour so we don't have a problem anymore.
Sure, appreciate that.
My name is Bill Netches. I'm the president of the Strathmore Place Homeowners Association. I'm also speaking on behalf of three other communities surrounding Strathmore Hall. We're concerned that Montgomery County Bill 6-10, which is the noise control amendment, is scheduled to be discussed this Tuesday. And we have concerns about the fact that this bill dramatically increases the allowable nighttime noise level, not only at Strathmore, but also in downtown Bethesda. Now, neither we nor, as far as I know, most of the residential communities in Bethesda have even had an opportunity to make any presentations about this since the hearings were taken long before we became aware of it in December. So the question I have is, why is there a need to amend the current noise control bill? This bill was based on science, using OSHA regulations and other federal government standards to allow noise control levels, and Strathmore has been operating their summer programs under this legislation for a long period of time. So the new regulations don't appear to have any science behind them, and we're concerned also by the fact that these regulations would extend the allowable noise levels in the evening instead of in the summertime from April through October. And the change from the current legislation is a 100-fold increase. Current legislation says 55 decibels at night. The new legislation would say 75 decibels at night, which is a 100-fold increase. So the question is, why is it necessary? And I would hope that the council would delay the consideration of this bill on Tuesday in order to allow homeowners and community members from not only the Strathmore area, but also in Bethesda to testify at a hearing in this regard. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take that as the council president. It's my responsibility to schedule these items before the council. And I have to say, based on the excellent work of your councilmember Roger Berliner, we have been convinced and persuaded to delay the action on this bill for a couple of reasons. One, it's gotten very complicated because the bill now has to address more than just Strathmore. It will have to now address the central business districts of Silver Spring and Bethesda. It will take into account Black Rock up in Germantown. So the bill has become much more complicated and complex than we originally thought it would be. So I've had a couple of meetings, and right now, the county executive is taking a look at the bill because he wants to work with us to broach some sort of a compromise prior to it coming back to council for full action. So that's where we are right now.
Let me just briefly say what prompted the interest in this legislation from communities like this. The decibel levels today, ambient decibel levels, are higher than what is allowed at an outdoor function. Walking down the street, the decibel levels are higher. So the reality is that any outdoor event, and the council president was very gracious, we have something on the order of 225 events in Silver Spring. Outside events in Silver Spring that are critical to the community, critical to the economic viability of Silver Spring, and every one of those is in violation of the noise ordinance. Every one of them. Because walking down the street is in violation. So there was an effort to say, is it time to modernize this? And then it became broader and more controversial and may require more thinking with respect to it. But I just wanted you to understand that it wasn't brought about by an irrational impulse.
Yes, I'm Laura Greenberg, and I'm from the Glen Echo Heights neighborhood. And I have a question about the forest conservation law. Specifically, do you have any estimates of when that's likely to come from the executive to the council for amendment?
I'm going to start apologizing to my colleagues. This is also an issue that comes to my committee. We have been awaiting the county executive's formulation for several years now. It is something that I personally am very interested in. I was interested in pursuing a form of a tree ordinance as opposed to the forest conservation law, concerned about infill development and what impact that has on our tree canopy. We've been waiting for the county executive's proposal. It is a very complex matter, and we just, we're waiting. And I've worked with my office and other offices, I've had numerous meetings with people in the environmental community indicating our willingness to assist in any way and bringing this about slightly faster, but it is a quite complex issue.
Hi, again. I'm Linda Grayhill, and I'm wondering if you can explain why SRA 1101 is a good idea? Because it seems to me you're just keeping the clock running in order to get some money from developers who don't have any to develop some really old plans. Oh, SRA 1101 is an amendment to extend the validity period for currently approved proposals.
This is the extension of the validity period for existing projects. Well, as you may have noticed, the economy is tanked. And what we see are projects that are unable, that may proceed, but are unable to proceed at this moment in time. So the idea is to not subject them to having to go back through the whole process all over again to get to where they are at this moment in time, given the problems in the economy. We did this a few years ago for this very reason, and regrettably, the economy hasn't picked up. Let's hope in the next two years it does.
And I just wanted to add to that, that these are projects that have already been approved. And so right now, many developers are having difficulty getting bank financing, and there are all kinds of problems with the economy. And so what we did was allowed them extra time, hoping that this economy picks back up sometime in the near future. So I think the majority of my colleagues on the council also co-sponsored that legislation.
Right, but this extension means that plans approved over a dozen years ago have more time still to be built. And they were all approved before BRAC. You have traffic approvals that are 12 years old already. So they don't seem to be very well-integrated into the current status of the county. Why would you keep them alive? Developers currently don't have the money to do these things. So they're going to overcrowd the schools, it's overbuilding, it's overtrafficking. It's like the cask of a Montalotto where you're bricking us in, car by car. We can't move out of our communities.
Well, those projects, you know, could have, might have proceeded earlier. I don't know how many are in that category. I think it's a handful. But the fact of the matter is, the whole issue is proceeding by the rules. And for us, projects that have been approved under the existing rules, satisfied all the adequate public facilities requirements at the time, many of them have actually paid their money into the various pots, not all, but some, but are unable to proceed. And given the economy, we are frankly, across the board, looking at ways to support our community, and this is part of that.
We're going to move on to the next question. They'll stay after and they can talk to you some more about it at the end of the show.
Hello, my name is Susan Loftus. I'm a resident of Tenbrook Drive in Silver Spring. I had hoped to ask some questions last Tuesday at the Silver Spring Civic Building, but that was postponed, canceled at the last moment, so I'm here tonight. So, Mike, I'm also a Montgomery County public school teacher. The percentage of locally generated money allocated to MCPS has been steadily declining for almost a decade now. In '03, it was 52.5%. In FY '11, 44.7. My question to any of the council members is, how would you respond to folks that say the growth in the county budget has been caused primarily by growth in county spending on MCPS, and therefore you should focus your cuts there?
Well, I'll just give other people an opportunity, but I chair the council's Education Committee and served on the Board of Education myself, so I know that budget quite well. And the fact of the matter is, MCPS's budget grows automatically every year because of a state mandated law called Maintenance of Effort. I'm going to answer the question the way I'd like to answer the question, if you don't mind. So I don't know where you got your data from, but that is a budget that's a growing budget. Every year, the school system's budget grows, and it's right now at 57% of the operating budget. And so I don't remember the rest of the question that you're asking me, but I just want to make sure that the facts are straight and that we're talking about the same numbers and the same budget.
My information is from the annual approved budgets, Montgomery County Government Office of Management and Budget. And just to clarify, I'm talking about the county-generated revenue allocated to MCPS. Yes, the absolute dollars are going up, but that, I'm talking about the county-generated, not the state money and not the federal money, the county-generated.
It's a share, it's as a share of MCPS's budget.
I waited for you.
Yeah, go right ahead.
The Office of Legislative Oversight document actually confirms this. So I'm, I want accurate information to be given to the public, and whatever decision is made is made, but accurate information, and I'd be happy to follow up with anyone. Thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And the county share of, taxpayer share of MCPS budget has diminished a little bit, but what that is saying is that we're getting more and more assistance from the state because our students are coming to us poorer. So a larger percentage of the money that we use to So, a larger percentage of the money that we use to fund MCPS's budget comes from the state. So, but together, that share is still 57% of the operating budget for MCPS. And a couple of my colleagues want a follow-up.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your question. I think a couple of points need to be added, and that is that in the past decade, Montgomery County put over half a billion dollars above the Maintenance of Effort requirement under state law that is required to get additional state aid for that year. And what has happened is that then, that becomes the new minimum. Even if the school system says, "We can cut funding by this amount, have no impact on the classroom," under the state law, they've still got to put in a budget that is higher than that, which is one of the flaws in the law. 82% of our budgets are operating, which are operating budgets, are salaries and benefits, and 2/3 of the employees that we fund are in MCPS. That drives the budget. And while federal assistance that was passed through the state and stimulus did go up a lot, a lot of it was spent as well on continuing expenditures. And now that the federal government's cutting back on the stimulus funding, we are being asked to make that up in effect at a time when we don't have the money with local dollars. So, the bottom line is, all agencies are going to be cut this year. We're going to try to do it as fairly as possible with the least impact on services and to be fair to employees.
I just wanted to follow up on that as well, because it's an important observation. It would not be accurate to say that Montgomery County has spent less from year to year on MCPS. In fact, it's accurate to say Montgomery County is spending more every year, year after year, on MCPS. What is happening is that the amount of money, as both my colleagues have said, from the state and the federal governments, has increased even faster. So, our relative share might have declined, but the amount of money we're putting into our schools has continued to grow. Over that same period of time, the amount of money that goes to the schools of what we have available, as the council president said, is about 56% to 57%. That's been the historic average. So, the county makes a very substantial investment in education. Schools have been the top priority for this county for a long time. And, you know, I would say from my vantage point, I'm going to continue to do everything that I can. You know? We want to have good schools. But we are facing the problem that the federal government's contribution, as a result of the evaporation of the stimulus funds that has gone, the state contributions are based on these arcane laws that, you know, create real problems, and they may evaporate too. So, we are left trying to meet that commitment, and that is the problem that we're in.
Okay. Well, we are going to take a quick break right now, but don't go away. We'll be back with more of our town hall meeting from Westland Middle School in Bethesda. Stay with us.
[applause]
When it's time for lunch, a sandwich is a quick and easy choice. And with the right ingredients, it can be good and good for you. So, I'm here today to see who can build the ultimate sandwich. All right? When the time is up, our judges will give you their scores. Ready? Set? Go! Jason starts out with a multi-grain roll. Ooh! Allison stuffing her Peter whip. Yes! Spin it! A great source of iron. Jason isn't skipping on the protein, adding plenty of smoked turkey, just like Allison's put in the finishing touches with crispy red bell peppers for a dose of vitamin A. Time! It looks like we have a tie. We'll need to call in our special guest referee.
Now, these are what I call quick delicious lunches. Whole grain breads, a whole variety of ingredients. There are so many different ways to build delicious, healthy sandwiches. These two get high marks in every category. I'd say you're both winners. America. Let's get healthy together.
We are back with the second half of our county council town hall meeting here at Westland Middle School in Bethesda, and I have my next question right here.
Hi, I'm Bailey Conde. I am the president of the Parkwood Residents Association. I sit on the Coalition of Military Medical Center Neighbors. My question is, can you please tell me whether BRAC transportation infrastructure improvements for Montgomery County have been placed at the top of the list in bold letters in your letter to the state delegation prioritizing transportation infrastructure projects for the county? And if it has not been done, can you tell me if it's going to be done and when?
I can tell you that the BRAC got very prominent mention, and that before we finalized the document, we circulated it to our excellent congressional delegation, who we are working with on a regular basis, to see whether or not they can be successful in getting us federal funding. And they were quite satisfied that it demonstrated Montgomery County's commitment and support for these absolutely critical facilities.
Great. I'll make my way to the back of the room here with a very patient guest who has been waiting to ask her question.
I'd like to address the Commission for Women in Rockville. I'm Chris Helmoth. I live in Gaithersburg, and I'm a long-term client at the Commission for Women. It's a crucial backbone for support in the most vulnerable members of society, and I would like to propose that social enterprise be introduced on the table or a roundtable of social enterprise with money that could help fund the life of these important, crucial jewels of society.
I would like to ask you back what, I don't really know what social enterprise programs are, but let me just say that I believe that the Commission for Women has done an amazing job for the time that it's served. And the council received from the county executive last week recommendations from the Organizational Reform Commission. One of the recommendations was to abolish the Commission for Women. And so, as council president, what I'm doing is, we are going to have the conversation regarding the commission in committee, and we will take up that conversation in committee, and then we will recommend to full council from that committee what should be done from our perspective regarding the Commission for Women. But it's not going to be an easy sell. We're anticipating on March 15th receiving the county executive's budget, and we know that there are going to be substantial cuts in that budget across the board, across agencies, across departments. And we're very concerned about how we're going to manage closing a $300 million budget deficit. So, you know, we will do all that we can in our conversations regarding the commission.
We have a follow-up.
Social enterprise is when you have a business that funds a social interest. It isn't just self-serving, but the funds that are gained from the retail purchase and income go funnel towards a social cause. And if we could get that set up for the Commission for Women, and I also have one blueprinted to help teach people that don't have their own value, have never been told, coming out of foster care and group homes, so that they have a better self-image and self-esteem to succeed in life instead of be set up to fail, and have a campus to do this instead of eliminating the support services for that population. It would be much more productive if we had a group of people with a think-tank, social enterprise angle instead of cut desperation. It would make more sense.
Okay. I would really like to see you after the meeting, and if you have a proposal, we'd like to take a look at it, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Levin.
Well, I agree. I think the discussion of the Commission for Women will come under the committee that I chair, the Health and Human Services Committee, and I'm familiar with the legislation that passed in Annapolis establishing B corporations, which are socially beneficial companies. And if what you're suggesting is, is that the Commission for Women could develop a self-sustaining revenue model where counseling, conferences, and other activities were paid for by participants, then I would anticipate the council would be very interested in a model like that.
James Aug is the Brookdale neighborhood here. I have a daughter in school here, but I also enjoy all of the county services, and I'd like to see, continue to enjoy the county services as I've grown accustomed. I'm hearing all this discussion. We're in a very bad fiscal time. We all know that. But that's what we're going to be in for years to come, and it's about time. I'd like to hear somebody start to talk about how we expand the pie rather than how we slice it and pit the schools against the libraries, against social services, against transportation. It's ridiculous. Let's have the guts to say, there's no free lunch. We all live in Montgomery County because we think it's a good place to live, and it doesn't come for nothing. This shouldn't be the something-for-nothing crowd. And it's up to our elected officials to take the lead and have the guts to say, "Look, we want to maintain the services." It's going to cost people to do that, and it's not, there are no easy fixes, and scapegoating the public workers is by no means the answer, no means, nor is it the means to even balance the budget. So, there needs to be a real conversation about revenue, and there's only so much I know that we can do at the county. This has to go to the state as well, and you, as our elected officials, have to take that message, as does the county executive. Instead of figuring out, why should the schools squeeze out somebody else or vice versa? Let's talk about how we maintain the type of life we want to have in Montgomery County. Thank you. [applause]
I think...
What are your ideas for revenues? I'm sorry. The question, what ideas about raising revenues are reasonable and feasible and you would be willing to support?
Well, I think first, the county needs to address the spending side of the equation. We do have a structural deficit because of the unsustainable level of benefits that we have in place. It is not sustainable under current revenue projections, and current revenue projections are based on taxes that are already substantial and that have been raised both locally and at the state level. I don't think there is much room in the public's tolerance for additional tax increases. And that's my own view. Other people obviously have a different view. That's fine. But that's my own view. And so, I think we need to address the level of benefits that are really escalating at a rate that double-digit increases every year in healthcare and pension benefits as well that are not sustainable. So, that we have to address first. If we do that, and we find that we need to raise revenues at that point to maintain the services that we all value, then I think that's the time to ask that question.
Let me, before we return to the speaker, I wanted to say a few things. These are, these are really big problems, and you're absolutely right. It's terrible. And what we knew last year when we approved the budget is that we were going to continue to have these conversations, we're going to continue to hear these concerns because of what was projected last year, even after we raised the energy tax significantly. We increased cell phone taxes significantly just to get us through the year. At the same time, we reduced spending across the board. Everybody who works for county government took a pay cut as a furlough, and we reduced all kinds of services. We had to make very difficult decisions. And we have heard from folks over the years, "Well, if you just do this, that will solve our problem. If you just do that, that will solve our problem." We've listened to folks, and we've tried some of that over the years. And what we've discovered is that we're back in the same spot every year. We've made, a number of years, we made significant increases to the property taxes. You may recall, we had to make a decision with respect to an ambulance fee that the taxpayers rejected this fall. We have tried a variety of solutions. And so, as a result of that, I commissioned last year, and the council supported the work that, we're really talking about the results of now, and you heard from the lady in the front row from the school system, their concern. The Office of Legislative Oversight has looked at what are the structural problems, and that's why we're regrettably having to confront the fact that no matter what, if we don't make some structural changes of one sort or another, we're going to have the same conversation every single year, because we've already been having it. And so, we're looking at that. On the other side of the equation, we've made a lot of important decisions for Montgomery County's future in terms of looking at opportunities for development, and that's going to be in the White Flynn area and up in the Zion City area, where we think that we will be able to expand our tax base and address the issue of the pie, because you're absolutely right. Montgomery County has not sufficiently supported the commercial growth that will help us bear this increasing tax burden. This is a problem, and there are many moving parts, but I want you to be aware that we're acutely sensitive to exactly that conflict. It's a dreadful conflict. We'd like to get ourselves in a different place where we have created an environment where we'll have more pots of tax revenue to draw from to address our fundamental core needs, which is definitely education, as well as libraries, as well as serving our most vulnerable, as well as transportation. So, that's been part of our conversation over some time. And, you know, the economy certainly isn't helping. Montgomery County residents, we have more of them, and they are less wealthy. That's one of our key problems right now. So, we are continuing to address the question of how we generate the right kind of revenue to support those concerns.
I just wanted to touch on very briefly the suggestion that Montgomery County council members were scapegoating public workers. I've not heard that occur. We're all following very carefully what's happened in Wisconsin. We're reading the op-eds from a variety of philosophical and ideological perspectives. There has been some very shrill commentary in the local media, but I've not heard elected officials in Montgomery County scapegoating public workers. We're all in this together. We're going to try and get through this together. We hope that the economy will improve. We have become uncompetitive. I understand the basis of your question, but I also know that we are losing business to jurisdictions near us whose taxes are lower. We, as Councilmember Florine just said, imposed a whopping gigantic tax increase just one year ago. So, simply to say that the answer is higher taxes, we are thoughtful people, and we value the work of our teachers, our firefighters, our policemen, our social workers, our bus drivers, all of our public employees. And I am not hearing council members scapegoating public employees, but we are going to have to find a solution together and get through this together and look forward to the day when the economy improves, and a substantial tax increase now would harm the capability of Montgomery County's economy to improve. I believe that very strongly.
Wanted to just also provide some information. I think, you know, many of you may know this, but not everybody does. Even if the council wanted to raise taxes, and really, there's not that many people asking for that, but there's no real options. The property tax is at the charter limit. The income tax is at the state-mandated limit. The energy tax was doubled, or nearly doubled, last year. The cell phone tax was, or tripled. Thank you. And there's really, there's no more revenue to raise. So, it leaves the burden on the spending side. I would also say, you know, if we want to keep doing this, we can keep doing this forever. But there is a better way, and it's to expand our commercial tax base. Fairfax County has 200,000 more jobs than Montgomery County. And I think this is a better place to live, but they have a revenue advantage. So, if we want to sustain our quality of life, if we want to get out of having to choose between services and get back to being able to balance them, then we need new sources of revenue. We need to figure out how to grow our economy, and that's going to mean some give and take, you know, and expectations in other areas. So, thank you.
Hi. My name is Kathleen Michaels. I live over in Wheaton, but what I, the question or comment that I have affects us all, so I hope that's okay. I'm also a neuroscientist, and I'm going to bring a little bit of science into this. And also, I want to say, green jobs is one of the possible solutions to some of our job-related problems. What I want to say, a number of studies have shown, I guess I have to hold on to it. A number of studies have shown that children living closer to highways have higher rates of asthma, and men have higher rates of heart and lung disease. Conversely, children living on tree-lined streets have lower rates of asthma than their compatriots who do not live in tree-lined streets but have other things being equal. Now, to back up that finding, recently, the National Science Foundation study reported that, quote, "Plants play a larger role than thought in cleaning up air pollution by actively removing pollutants from the air, more than we had ever realized." In the face of all this information, while more highways are being built, our street tree planting budget was zeroed out, our schools, parks, and recreational playgrounds and fields are being paved over with plastic and tire crumbs, something that's called artificial turf. And Bailey, if he wants to make a comment, can attest to the horrors of artificial turf. Artificial turf actually has 20,000 to 40,000 pulverized And Bailey, if he wants to make a comment, can attest to the horrors of artificial turf. Artificial turf actually has 20,000 to 40,000 pulverized tires on top of the plastic, which is on top of rocks. And ironically, one of the main constituents of the tires, carbon black, is, which is essentially soot, is the very compound that has been shown to cause, in air pollution, to cause heart, lung cancer, heart, lung disease, and brain damage. So I would like the county and all the departments to seriously both reconsider and encourage more greening, urban greening and redevelopment. We need green everywhere we can get it. The street tree planting budget, too, that's a false economy, and to go to better performing natural grass fields instead of paving over our fields with, and playing Russian roulette with the lives of our children. Thank you.
Interesting. While I get to the next question on the other side of the room, I do want to mention that I believe the council members will stay for a few minutes when the show is over, because we are running out of time. So I think people, if you don't get your question asked, you might be able to get directly with the council members.
Hi, Andy Giffen. I live in Bethesda. Just going to say one word, Pepco.[1334.83][1334.83](LAUGHTER)
I walked all that way? Okay.
I want to hear what they think about it.
Okay.
Well, I think all of my colleagues share the frustration that you have and that we have with respect to Pepco. We've worked very hard. We wish we had regulatory authority over Pepco. Most people don't appreciate that our county has no legal authority over Pepco. So what my colleagues and I have been doing is going to those who do have legal authority over Pepco, our state legislature, and the Maryland Public Service Commission, which totally regulates it, and been saying to them, "You've got to make Pepco do its job." They have a franchise monopoly, and they have not been performing their function. They only have two, three basic functions. They buy power, they're supposed to deliver it, and they're supposed to have customer service. And for this, they earn approximately 9.8% rate of return. Some of us believe we need to change that dynamic, and so the state is, I think, poised with Governor O'Malley's support, and Delegate Feldman from Montgomery County is going to, we're going to pass legislation, I believe, at the state level that will require reliability standards. We haven't had standards. So when we've raised our hand and said, "The power is going out all the time," they go, "Well, gee, we don't have any standards, so how can we say they're doing a bad job?" So now, we're going to have standards, and hopefully now, we're going to have penalties for them not performing. And my colleagues and I have pressed ahead with respect to at least taking the next step in exploring alternatives to Pepco, such as public power, a very serious undertaking that we are approaching in a very serious, thoughtful manner. But it is a big deal, and it's a big deal to all of my colleagues.
I'm Sally Boskin. I represent the Montgomery County Public Libraries, and we do have power, and we do have great customer service. And I want to thank you over the years that you've given us things for the public libraries.
What's your rate of return?[1484.65][1484.65](LAUGHTER)
And I want to remind you to keep funding us. Thank you.[1489.35][1489.35](APPLAUSE)
Good evening. My name's John Witherspoon. I'm a lifelong resident of Montgomery County. Two quick things. I've been disappointed in what seems like a very slow pace of adoption for LED technology. You put in an LED street lamp, you put in an LED traffic signal, you get an immediate environmental impact in a very positive way. And aside from the initial cost, once that's recouped, all of a sudden, you've got an enormous cost saving in terms of maintenance and power savings and so forth. The other thing is regarding the issue of solicitations at traffic signals, I have the greatest sympathy for people who say that they need the money from passing motorists and from the firefighters who collect for various causes and so forth. But I've never understood why you should have to be a hostage to some random person walking along the road just because you happen to have been stopped at a traffic light. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Your comment is very timely, especially about the second issue, the roadside solicitation issue, because the county council has asked our state legislature, our state delegation in Annapolis to amend a bill, MC 20-11, to give the county the authority to have the option to prohibit roadside solicitation, because there is a, I think many of us feel that it's inherently unsafe to have fundraising done in the street or on the medians. And while many of the causes for which people are soliciting are very commendable and excellent, it needs to be done in a way that's safe. So I would take this opportunity to urge you to let your state delegates know that you would like the county to have this authority, because under the original bill as introduced, it would only give us the option to establish a permitting system, which will not get at the safety issue. And that vote is scheduled to come up this Friday morning, so now's the time. Let me just, regarding panhandling, I am chairman of the committee that pays for the services for the homeless and poor in this community, and I'm a strong supporter of nonprofit service providers like Interfaith Works, the Montgomery County Coalition for the Homeless, Bethesda Cares, and others. And every time I have the opportunity, as I am tonight on television, I say to the public on this issue, if you are concerned by panhandling, don't give money to panhandlers. And we understand that we are sympathetic to those in need, but there are more effective ways to meet the needs of people in need than handing them spare change. And I am, you know, perhaps a skeptic by nature. I'm not certain that passage of this law, which I do not object to, in Annapolis will in fact stop panhandling. I think what would stop panhandling would be if people stopped giving money to panhandlers.
Hi, I know there's one agency that sort of intersects a number of the topics we've touched on, the environment, economic development, jobs, and that's Metro. So what are we trying to do to get them a dedicated source of operating funds? And if we can't do it here at the county level, what is it that people like me, who take it every day, need to do at the state level to get that to happen, even if it means doing it before Virginia or DC?
Thank you.
Great question. You know, Metro is the lifeblood of Montgomery County, and so many people take Metro to their jobs. You know, we did make some progress recently in getting the long-term agreement with the three jurisdictions and the federal government. A lot of the money that was intended to go to system expansion, to get to eight-car trains, you know, to provide a better ride, ended up having to be redeployed into safety, because safety has become such a concern. And so, once again, we are short of the money over the long term that we need for Metro to reach full capacity, and that's a real challenge. So the council, in the recent priorities letter on transportation, put Metro in the top category, saying that we do, we urge the state to look for more money to help fund those kinds of improvements. And I know that at the Transportation Committee, we're going to be working very hard to try to get Metro back on track, because it really is, is just such a vital issue. Thank you.
Sorry to cut you off, but we are out of time for this town hall meeting. For County Cable Montgomery, I'm Susan Kennedy. Thanks a lot for tuning in.[1757.01][1757.01](APPLAUSE)[1758.01][1758.01](MUSIC)